I know where you live.
Yeah, you have been.
Yeah, we'll be fine.
Here's Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
John Hedley just joined.
Is that you, Terry?
Yeah.
Good to see you.
I'm waiting for the... Is he on? Ask him if he's on the one from the calendar or if he's on a different one. Yeah. Jacob Holmuth just joined.
Can you try and give me the volume so you can see?
He's not. He's not in.
Okay, here, you're walking through.
Hey, Carl, can you go to Google Calendar, please, and click on the link in Google Calendar? Yes, please?
You got it, Carl?
Yeah. Why don't I just go ahead and click on George?
There should be, in the meeting, there should be a thing that says "Google Meet," and you click on that green link there.
Not in the meeting. We go back, we try it. We... That's a... That's twice. And that's a pass.
I don't know which one he's on.
What you said, hello?
Yeah, George is with you.
Yeah.
He's here. Hey, Bruce. Bruce?
Can't get through. I asked George about 50 minutes ago. He gave me a call. He had a hole in me, but I didn't hear anything, so.
He emailed.
But I can't get in and talk to him, so.
All right, Bruce, George is right here. He'll call you in one second, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. I'll get in and...
May 5th, 2020, meeting of the Woodstock... Of the Woodstock community. I'm getting feedback. I think it might be me.
Yeah, I think it is.
If you're still logged into the other meeting link, that's what was happening to me earlier.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Neither is it either. All right. This is the Woodstock Community Unit School District 200 Board of Education Meeting for May 5th, 2020. Let's start with the flag of allegiance, from the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, as a reminder, the State of Illinois has opened provisions of the Open Meetings Act to law and board to conduct business via electronic means, and enforce limits on gathering size and appropriate proceedings guidelines in regard to the COVID-19 outbreak. Lynn, can we have the roll call, please?
Dr. Bidwell?
Here.
Mr. Ferris?
I did. I sent it to him.
Mr. Ferris?
Mike went off the call.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Gilmore? Mr. Gilmore, you're muted.
Here.
Mr. Hedley?
Here. Here.
Mr. Misselli?
Here.
Mr. Preisi?
Here.
Dr. Ferris, are you here?
Mike, you're on mute.
Dr. Ferris, are you here?
My phone. Here we go.
Here.
Okay, all here. All right.
Awesome.
So the first order of business on our agenda tonight is the election of officers, president, vice president, and secretary. I will let you know that all the current officers are willing to serve a second term or another term. Do we have any nominations for president?
I nominate Carl Gilmore for president.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination by Mr. Preisi, seconded by Dr. Bidwell. Do we have any other nominations? All right, at this point then, I am going to allow Mr. Holmuth to take the vote, and then we'll move on from there. Mr. Holmuth, would you take the vote?
Yeah, I'm here. Are we doing a roll call or do all in favor say aye?
Let's do all in favor and all again.
All in favor of Mr. Gilmore as president, say aye.
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 Guys have it.
All right, any opposed?
Silence.
Were there any opposed?
No.
Were there any abstentions?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your confidence for another term. Okay, then at this point, we will take nominations for vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president? I nominate Jacob Holmuth.
I second it.
Okay. I believe that was Mr. Hedley. Are there any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. We'll take a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, Mr. Holmuth. Next, uh... Next, we're taking nominations for secretary. Are there any nominations for secretary?
I nominate John Preisi.
I second it.
Okay, we have a nomination by Mr. Hedley of Mr. Preisi, seconded by Mr. Misselli. Are there any further nominations? Anybody else? Okay, then, again, by voice vote, all in favor of Mr. Preisi as secretary, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Okay. All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Okay, by unanimous vote, Mr. Preisi as secretary, congratulations.
Thank you.
Right. And we'll move on to our content agenda. Congratulations to all officers. We'll move on to our content agenda. The first item on our consent, we'll take a look at our consent agenda. There is also a personnel addendum. So please take a moment and review those items. And if any board members wish to pull any of the items for consideration, please let me know.
Carl, are you still getting a little feedback?
Yeah, a ton of it.
I'm not getting any feedback on Mike.
Really? Okay, and I hear you, Chris, for clear, Michelle.
Yeah.
Carl's hard to hear from me.
Let me try this. I'm going to try and leave the meeting and rejoin. Give me a moment, and then I will come back.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't even know where the other meeting came from, Mike.
Yeah. It's all right. He's sending it again. Hold on. Hey, Bruce, you're live, kid. You can say whatever you want.
Okay, is that better?
Keep talking. Test him too. Yes. For me, Jerry?
Oh, you're in it. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go back to where we were. We're on consent agenda. There's an addendum. Please review the consent agenda. If there are any items you wish to pull, please let me know. If not, there's a suggested motion on the bottom of your agenda.
Move to waive the reading of and approve the consent agenda printed in board book, including the routine personnel addendum dated May 5th, 2020.
Motion by Mr. Preisi, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Preisi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Holmuth?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. I'm going to ask this, George. Is it possible that having all the mics on is causing the feedback?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. If you're not talking, let's try turning the mics off and see if that makes things any clearer, okay? All right. I think I learned that from watching e-learning today. With all the kids on their mics on, it seems to bounce around a lot. All right, let's go. Our next item on our agenda is our communications. This is a chance for members of the public staff or board to address the board. We will start with public comments. Have we received any public comments via email, Dr. Mo?
We have not.
We have not.
Okay. Are there... Okay, so at this point then, we'll move into our staff comments. Are there any staff members who wish to address the board? Okay. Then we'll move into our board comments. Are there any board comments at this time? All right. There being no communications, we'll move into superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Again, we want to take this opportunity to thank all our local heroes and first responders who are working so hard to keep the rest of our community healthy and running. This is also Teacher Appreciation Week, and I don't think in my lifetime there's been a time where I've appreciated teachers as much as I do right now. The dedication, passion, and caring from all of our teachers in District 200 has been amazing, and words alone can't express how much I truly appreciate what our teachers and staff are doing right now for our schools, our children, and our community. And the last two months have been incredibly difficult, but they've come through with amazing effort. So for Teacher Appreciation Week, I can't think of a better time to appreciate all of our teachers throughout the country, but especially here in District 200. Our last day with students in e-learning will be May 21st, which was originally scheduled last day of learning. Our last day for seniors will be May 11th. We'll continue, we've continued to see increases in percentage of students who engage both in live instruction and e-learning, and then also the percentage of students that are handing in their assignments also during this time, which is great, and that's been our goal the entire time. We had a parent survey two weeks ago, and from there, we have responses telling us the areas that parents identified as areas of interest or need were Canvas and then grading. So at each grade level, we've created videos and handouts that we sent to parents on grading and Canvas. They're also available on the website. And then our end of the year activity has been modified to try to best meet the needs of our students and also the health needs of our students in our community. The middle school promotions will be virtual ceremonies. They'll be recorded prior to the event, and then they'll be shared on the night that they were scheduled originally. We still hold out hope for live high school graduation with a target of late in July. And once we find out if that's possible or not, we'll move forward. If it is, we'll come up with our ceremony we can. If it's not, we'll have a virtual ceremony at that time. And we've been in contact with families and seniors to let them know of our plans and to receive feedback as we go. That's my report for this week.
Great, thank you. Okay, then our next item on our agenda is our monitor report, which is draw informed schools training.
Keely's going to share that with us.
Yep. Hello, everybody.
Keely.
Hi, good evening. I think George is going to present the, show the presentation. But we wanted to share with you really a plan that started earlier this school year. It's been one of our goals to really focus on, you know, our students that have some kind of trauma. There's many students that have, you know, more than one traumatic experience. And so we wanted to focus on some professional development that we could provide our staff over the course of the 2021 school year. And so that's really what we wanted to focus on tonight, to kind of update you on where we've, you know, the different, our plan for next year. So we're going to start just by talking a little bit about students and trauma, and what does it mean for our district to be a trauma-informed school, a trauma-informed district? So if you could advance the next slide, George. So when we look at, you know, students and trauma, really, there's over 50% of children have been exposed to an adverse childhood experience, and many children have actually been exposed to multiple ACES, so more than one. And so when we look at providing professional development to our staff, so we are a trauma-informed school, it really means that all adults in the school community are prepared to recognize and to respond to those students that have been impacted by traumatic stress. So that us all the way from custodians to our bus drivers, to our teachers, to our principals, our associates, so it's really all adults in the school are prepared to respond to and recognize when students have been in stress. And so really, our goal over the course of next school year is to make sure that we've created a trauma-sensitive learning environment for, and so all aspects of students, when they're in the classroom, when they're at school, in the cafeteria, playground, on the school bus. We really have provided a healthy, safe, engaged environment where students feel supported, and they are obviously continue to be challenged in their environment. And so over the course of this, actually, over the last several months, we were in, there was a committee that looked at different providers for professional development around trauma. George, if you can advance the next slide. So one of the people that we really honed in on was Kristin Sowers, and we looked at her training, and she actually is a published author. She's written a couple of books, and I put them there, Fostering Resilient Learners, Relationship Responsibility Regulation. And so she's also a licensed mental health professional. And we've had several conversations with her over the course of the last couple of months. She works all across the country with schools, really providing that common language, that foundation for trauma-informed schools, and she gives strategies to support students. So this, over the past month, our K-12 principal team has been reading her Fostering Resilient Learners book. And we've really enjoyed discussing different aspects of that book over the past month or so. And so really, our plan now moving forward over the course of the summer and into next school year, if you can advance the next slide, George, we will be in July, we are going to have our admin, we'll have a training on July 20th. That's where all of our ALC, our Administrative Leadership Council, will be really learning how to lead their buildings, lead their departments in some of those trauma-invested practices. And then the following day, on July 21st, each building has identified a core leadership team that will be doing extensive training with Kristin over the course of next school year. And so on that July training, she's going to really help us to develop a vision for the building and their efforts on how they're going to implement some of these practices, and obviously that sustainability piece, which is so important. Then in August, we're really excited to have Kristin here for our staff, so the entire District 200 staff, all of our employees, will receive training. And that's really important that, again, those custodians, bus drivers, all of our associates, that all of our training, all of our staff have that training and that foundation, and so we're using that common language and continuing to build that culture of safety for our students. So we're excited about that August training. And then over the course of next school year, in September, January, March, we're going to bring Kristin back to continue to work with that building-level leadership team that has been identified. And we also are excited to bring her back in September for our parent presentation. And so we're, make sure that's well-publicized, and so she's really going to talk to parents about how to help parents, how to help their children manage their own stress at home. So we're really excited about this opportunity, and we'll continue to update as we, you know, develop this over the course of next school year. But we are very invested in this, and we're extensive opportunities for staff to learn about these practices so we can continue to support our students. And I think, you know, as we've all been in e-learning and we've been at home, I think it's what a better time than now to really learn some of these practices and these strategies to help support our students.
Yeah, just, you know, all these dates, things can turn virtual. We can make changes depending on the situation, on how many people can have in a crowd, things like that. So Kristin will present. If it has to be virtual, it will. But the parent presentation, if we can't do it in September, we'll push it back to January, March, if we can do it then. So it's a fluid situation as far as those things go.
Okay, do any board members have any questions for Keely? I have one or two. It seems like it, you know, what we're dealing with, there's our, of course, it's our responsibility is to deal with the schools and students. But in what ways are you planning on engaging parents in this? I mean, it would seem that you're kind of running a roadblock if you take, make efforts to deal with stresses in the school, but then they go home and they're facing the same stresses they might normally have.
So I think obviously, you know, part of that plan, you know, when Kristin comes in July, you know, part of that plan, when we roll it out at the building, is that parent component. You know, how do we plan for and provide some of the strategies that we're learning through her professional development? And that's, that whole child, and that's part of the child, obviously, is that family component and the parent plan. And then again, when we have her come back in September to present to the parents too, parents are going to be getting those strategies, and we can take some of that information. She has lots of literature and information that we can push out to families as well. And when we have our back-to-school nights or when we have our literacy nights, you know, we can take that information and continue. That's going to be a big focus of ours over the course of next school year. So I think there'll be multiple opportunities through just the work that's going to happen from that small leadership group to help develop those specific plans at the school building, and then obviously the different times when we have those parents engaged with us that we can push out information to them.
Yeah, and just, just to follow up there quick, you know, also, there's things we can control and things we can't control. So we're going to educate parents the best we can, but part of the situation is things that happen at home, they still come to school, we still have to deal with them. And I think part of this is dealing with and understanding what kids do have going on at home. That's one of the feedback, pieces of feedback we've gotten from teachers and administrators over e-learning is, you know, seeing what kids are going through right now and understanding that. So that's part of our process too, partnering with home, but also understanding what's going on at home and how we can help impact that at school.
And part of the professional development is really giving those strategies to teach kids to be resilient too. How do they become resilient and overcome some of the trauma that they've been through? And so that's a real key piece to the training as well.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, thoughts? Okay, well, we'll look forward to seeing what happens next year, and good luck and good effort on putting this together for the upcoming year. It sounds like it's a pretty good, pretty good effort and well-thought-out, and it sounds like you have the right resources in place, so great job on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keely.
Okay, then our next item, we have no unfinished business. So we'll next move into our new business. And the first item of new business is the review of the debt management and restructuring plan, refunding plan.
So we've got, we've got Jen with us again tonight from PMA. Who can go through it? Just to kind of touch real quick, we took the proposals we had last time, and then we took feedback from the board, and some concerns we've had just with the economy and things going on right now, and built some different models also. So it's a combination of those two. Bruce, if you want to introduce Jen?
Sure. Good evening. So Jen is here from PMA Securities. And like Dr. Mo mentioned, you know, last time we had three scenarios using about $25 million of fund balances, and we asked her to do three more using $15 million. Just as Dr. Mo said, because of the economy and what's going on at the state level, that might, you know, affect us here in the next few years. So Jen, do you want to put your presentation up there?
I will, yes. Thank you very much. Okay, so hopefully everyone can see this. All right. So just kind of diving right back in, kind of a reminder of where we were at when we last spoke, March 10th. So kind of just before, I think we were just beginning to start calling COVID-19 a pandemic at the time, and as we know, a lot has changed since mid-March. But just to recap what we're looking at with the district's existing debt picture, on this chart, these are your total debt payments. And so we show a few years of history, but for levy year 2019, let's focus on that first. You can see these green columns are the non-referendum debt service payments. They're colored differently than the rest of the debt because non-referendum bond payments are subject to an annual limit referred to as the debt service extension base. So the district's debt service extension base is on this chart, and it is that purple line that's going across it. The bulk of the debt payments were at some point bond issues that were authorized by referendum. So those dark blue columns represent that referendum debt service payment. And for levy year 2019, so tax bills due this year, you can see that the total debt service payments that the district will be making, and this corresponds with fiscal year 2021, total a little more than 10 million. However, there was that $3 million abatement applied toward the debt service levy. So what is actually being levied is net of that abatement amount, and that's about 7.35 million. As it currently stands, the debt payment next year will go up considerably, and it'll gradually increase for a few years thereafter. So what we're going to discuss today, as we did back in March, is how can we manage that increase? And this slide just shows the detail behind those numbers. Levy year 18, which corresponds with fiscal year 20, that was tax bills collected last year, that's highlighted in yellow. Levy year 19, though, is in place, so the one, the 7.35 million amount that I was referring to on the prior graph, you can hear it's that first number highlighted in green. Next year, the total debt service payment for the district will go up to 19 million if no action is taken. So these purple shaded amounts are highlighting the bond issues that are eligible for payment prior to maturities. There are three of those, the 2012A, 2015A, and 2015B. What that means is we can potentially refund or restructure these purple payments on a tax-exempt basis as early as this fall. In the orange ox toward the left, these... In the orange ox toward the left, these are payments on the district's capital appreciation bonds or Cabs, as we sometimes refer to them. Those are entirely non-callable, which means anything that we need to do to reduce those payments and restructure those would have to be done on a taxable basis. And in general, taxable rates are going to be higher than tax exempt. So the restructuring or refunding of those payments is more costly. So before we get into some of the levy management scenarios that we have today, it's important that we talk about what's been happening in the market. So since mid-March, we did have quite a bit of volatility in the municipal bond market. So much like it affected, COVID-19 has affected every aspect of our lives, the municipal market was not excluded. So this chart is the Municipal Market Data or MMD Index, which is the index off of which tax exempt bonds price. And this is the chart that shows a lot of the history going back to 2003. You have, we're tracking the one-year index in blue at the bottom up to the 20-year index, which is the purple line at the top. In the background, shaded in gray, this is the Fed funds target rate. And you can sort of get a sense of the volatility that we've been experiencing in recent weeks, but I'll highlight that a little more on the next slide so you can see it better. But I wanted to include this historical perspective because I do think it's important to keep in mind that even with this volatility that we've experienced recently, rates are still generally at historical lows. So that's the good news out of all of this. So this chart is taking just a few of those data points, the five, 10, and 20-year index, and looking at what's happened since the first of the year. So you can see how in mid-March, we had a rather large spike in interest rates in the municipal market. And it had a lot to do with investors really just pulling their money out of the market. Municipals all but stalled for a couple of weeks there. There were very few deals that were getting done. And the ones that were really were just issuers who needed the funds and had no choice but to enter the market. And as a result, they had to pay some pretty hefty premiums to try to attract investors. Since that time, federal stabilization efforts have provided some relief. So you can see over the last several weeks, those levels have somewhat stabilized. And actually, this chart is as of close of business on Thursday, and the last three business days, we have seen rates across the curve go down three days in a row. So that's, that's been very good. And this stabilization is definitely what we wanted to see. In general, the higher the credit rating, the better your bonds are selling. So from the district's perspective with the double A credit rating, that is quite strong. So that's very, very good. We have recently done some issues for lower rated credits and they've gone well. However, you can tell that it is a little more difficult to attract investors with those lower credit ratings. So that's very good in our case with the district's double A rating. Now, one factor that we unfortunately can't avoid is that we are in Illinois. And our state unfortunately has been placed on a negative credit outlook by both Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And frankly, the state's economic condition just continues to affect borrowing rates for local issuers like the district. And that Illinois premium, if you will, may get worse, meaning because you're in the state of Illinois, you may have to pay a higher borrowing rate than a very comparable school district in Wisconsin, for example. It may get wider simply because of the impact of COVID-19. It's really a time will tell situation how much that really impacts us, but it is a factor that we'll be monitoring very closely over the next several months. Okay. But again, I think one important thing to see here is that where these rates currently are is very, very close to where they were at the beginning of the year. So again, we're back to those relative lows. Okay. So this is the same chart we just looked at a few slides ago showing the district's existing debt payments, but we've highlighted some of the key dates to keep in mind. So for that first increase that would occur for bills, tax bills that go out next year, the deadline to change that 2020 levy is March 1st of 21. And it does correspond well with some of those bonds that are callable, meaning we can do a tax exempt restructuring. The three years that are circled are primarily made up of the payments on the capital appreciation bonds or Cabs. And again, any restructuring on those would have to be done on a taxable basis. This slide is very wordy, so I'll try to highlight the key points. We've included six scenarios to review this evening. The first three are essentially simply updates of the three that we talked about back in March. I did update them though, because rates have changed, they've gone up a little bit since that time. So I wanted you to have the most accurate information when you're comparing all six of them tonight. Those scenarios, as a reminder, we're targeting an $8.9 million annual debt service payment. And the three new options vary in different ways, and I'll explain those when we get to them. All of the scenarios include a tax exempt restructuring of the eligible bonds as early as this fall. And all of them incorporate at least one future taxable restructuring of those Cabs in order to meet the debt service levy objective. The timing varies somewhat by scenario. In some cases, it would need to be, the taxable restructuring would need to occur by early '22, whereas in other cases, perhaps not until early '23. Okay. So scenario one is targeting $8.9 million of annual debt service with no future abatements. And you can see in the background, shaded in gray, these are the existing debt payments. The new payments after this restructuring plan is implemented are at the very top of these navy blue columns, which is right at 8.9 million. So the debt payments in this scenario are extended by about nine years. So they would have ended after levy year 2032. Now they extend to levy year 2041. Okay. Scenario two was the one that we referred to as sort of the two-year hit scenario. This, again, as Reese mentioned, incorporated $25 million of abatements back in March and also targeted the $8.9 million for the next three years. So those transparent light blue columns represent the $25 million of abatements over the next three years. And then in levies 23 and 24, that is where the hit, so to speak, would happen on the tax bills. So the payments in levies 23 and 24 are around 21.7 and 22.5 million respectively, after which, beginning in levy year 25, the total annual, or excuse me, the annual debt service payment would drop to about 6.9 million. In this scenario, the final debt payment would remain the same. It would be in the same year. Okay. So it's not extending it beyond what's existing. Scenario three was the $8.9 million target again, also with $25 million of abatements. However, there's no hit. Instead, debt service is extended by about three years in order to maintain $8.9 million every year going forward. Scenario four is one of the new ones. This one still targets $8.9 million, however, we're only applying $15 million for future abatements. In this case, the final payment is extended by about six years. Scenario five, again, $15 million of abatements, but you're allowing the annual debt service levy to rise to 10 million. In doing so, the final payment is only extended by about three years. Conversely, scenario six kind of gives you the other end of the spectrum. If you were to also apply $15 million of abatements, but try to maintain the existing debt service levy that you had for 2019, which was 7.35 million, it would require several future taxable restructuring issues because with general obligation bonds, we are limited to a 20-year term. So in order to extend the debt as far as we need to, in order to maintain this $7.35 million of annual debt service, we simply have to wait all the way up until 2026 to issue a final taxable restructuring in order to reach those outer years of this structure. So the final debt payment in this scenario is extended by 12 years. So in order to try to compare them, there are a few things I want to highlight. So again, the first three scenarios were the same ones, are very similar to the ones that we looked at in March. The new scenarios, four, five, and six, are highlighted in yellow here. And so the first row of data on this summary chart is the total future abatements. It's one of the ways in which they all differ. So in scenario one, for example, no future abatement. Scenarios two and three from March had $25 million, but for the reasons that Dr. Mon and Reese mentioned, the new scenarios, four, five, and six, take that abatement level down to about 15 million. In green, I've highlighted what the payment was for the $200,000 homeowner in the district. So for this year's tax bills, the $200,000 homeowner is paying about $495. If no action is taken to adjust levy year 2020 debt service, then the tax bill would increase by $784. So it's not that it would go from $495 to $784. The total bill on the debt portion for the district's residents would be, would go from $495 to just under $1,300. Okay. In scenarios one through four, each of those targets $8.9 million in debt service and that translates into an increase next year of about $105. So bills for the debt portion of the district's tax bill, it would go from $495 to about $600 for a $105 difference. Scenario five, which allows it to go not just to 8.9 million, but up to 10 million, that impact next year for the $200,000 homeowner would be about $179. And then of course, if we maintain the payment where it currently is, it would be essentially the same, $495 going forward. Okay. So you can see how the timing of the future restructuring, the taxable restructuring of the capital appreciation bonds also varies slightly by the scenarios, but not by much. Other, only in the $25 million abatement scenarios can you really wait two to two and a half years from now. In the other scenarios, this next phase, this taxable restructuring would need to occur by early 2022. So the net debt service cost of the restructuring is the third row from the bottom. So you can see how in general, the larger your abatement, the less costly it is. Also, the higher you're willing to set that annual debt service target, the less costly the restructuring is. And then down here, we show the change in future debt service levies. So this is essentially taking the cost of those restructuring bonds, but netting off any future abatement that's involved in this scenario. So for example, in scenario two, the cost of the restructuring actually adds $2.9 million to the district's overall debt payments. However, you'd be abating $25 million off the levies in this plan. So from a taxpayer's perspective, what they're being charged over the life of the bond is actually being reduced by 22 million. And then of course, the final debt payment in each of these scenarios also varies. Any questions for me so far?
Well, I have a bunch. Hold on. First of all, with respect, looking at the chart, with scenario comparisons, when it talks about, when you talk about an increase of $784, is it 84?
Yes.
$784 if we do nothing. That $784 is for the life of the bump, right? So it'd be four years of an increase or five years of an increase, but then it would come back down to the level we're at. Is that accurate?
Yes. It would come back down after those five years. That's correct.
Whereas if we take no abatement and stretch it out to 2043, that $105 increase is an increase for the life of the debt to 2043, right?
Right. So it would be a one-time increase, but it would remain at that level. That's correct.
Right. Okay. As opposed, so what you're looking at is roughly, what, about 13-year, 23-years of increases to seven, about $600 a year under scenario one until 23-years. Whereas the $1,300 would be for five years and then it would come back down to $495, assuming all other things are the same, and end in about 14-years. On more change existing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The other question, and this is more for Mike and Reese, is we're talking about some fairly significant abatements here. Are we looking at, for these abatements, are these manageable numbers? A $25 million abatement, $25 million, $15, $15, and $15. Can we manage those?
Well, the 25 is the high end and we felt comfortable with that number at the time. I think currently, when you start talking about, you know, are we going to get all the property tax money on time? Can we count on that? Can we count on the state not cutting or freezing our spending, our revenue, which has happened, when we started looking at '08, '09? We get concerned with 25 and that's why we went to 15. We could make anyone work. 25 is going to be tight and we tighten the belt and we take some chances. 15 leaves us a little more room and then things pick up. If we have money, you can always abate whatever we have. If you get to a future point and we have more money than you anticipated, then you can abate and lower it at that time. Reese, do you have anything to say there?
That's exactly right. So, you know, using the whole 25 million makes me a little nervous given the current economy, you know, taking that down to about 15 million, I feel. And like he said, we can, 10 years from now, maybe do some more abatements to lower the tax rate.
All right. Just one more point there, Carl. We can do whatever number you want though. If the board says, hey, what about 20? What about, I mean, we can come back with whatever the board wants us to do also, just so everyone's aware of that. These are numbers that we can move as a board. If you tell us to do something, Jen, do it and we'll come back with it.
All right. Going back to a previous question, with respect to, let's say, looking at scenario six, where it talks about a $15 million abatement at a dollar until 2046, those three scenarios that you have on the right, all the yellow ones, those increased tax payments are permanent until the loan is over. Is that right? Till the lending is over. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Whereas scenario one, two, and three are temporary, no, they're permanent as well.
All of them are, yeah. They all keep, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So Claire, six doesn't actually raise it. It's the same, it keeps it flat.
Right. I'm just doing.
Yeah, it's a rounding difference. Yeah.
Is there a, and I'm sorry if I'm, I'm going to commandeer the floor for a few minutes and then let other people ask their questions too. With respect to our ability to tax, do, Mike, do we have the legal power to tax to the extent necessary in order to raise enough money to pay the debts that we find in our current situation?
Yes.
We wouldn't have the legal ability to go that high.
Well, whenever, when we issued the debt, at that point in time, we were given the authority to raise taxes to repay the debt.
Okay. So if necessary, we could live with what we have. It'd be hard, but we could do it.
Yeah, because it's bond and interest, right? That's the two different ways that we tax. Because it's the bond and interest, we have, because we approved it, the taxpayers approved it, you can tax up until that point needed to pay it.
Yeah, it's non-capped. It's outside of the cap.
Jen, this is more toward you. If we do nothing, what would be the, what do you expect would be the effect on our ability to borrow money in the future in terms of in terms of our credit rating? We're double A now, but all of a sudden, we've got this big tax hit that's coming up. Is that going to, would that, do you feel that would have an impact on our credit rating if that were to happen?
No, I don't think so. They already rated you for those bonds when they were issued. And in fact, if you were to do that and could show that, you know, you were able to collect that money and make those payments, there would be no issue. The creditors are looking at what, you know, are you going to be able to make your payments in the future on any new bond issue that you take on? And so to the extent that there would be no issue with collecting those tax dollars, then they would see no issue with it either.
Two more questions, and then I'll let other people talk. With respect to the bonds that we are not allowed, that we have to refund using taxable bonds, is there anything that would change that? For example, is there anything would say, within a certain period of time of the maturity of the bond, you can tax it, you can refund it into a, using non-taxable bonds?
So, yes and no. One thing that you could do, any bond can be refunded or restructured as long, on a tax-exempt basis, within 90 days of its maturity. However, there's no way the timing works out for the district in order to actually reduce the levy, because that levy reduction would have to happen by March 1st of a given year for a payment that doesn't actually come due until January of the following year. So that 90-day window is too short of a time span. One method that a small minority of districts have employed, or at least discussed employing, is, you know, you could, in March, make that abatement anticipating that when you're within the 90-day call window of those capital appreciation bonds, that at that point, you would issue a refunding bond in order to actually make that payment. So you'd be temporarily using fund balance to abate in March, and then for about six months, six to eight months, you would be short that money until you can actually do the refunding bonds on a tax-exempt basis. There are a couple of issues with that. Number one is obviously tying up that liquidity every year. However, an even bigger one is you have to be pretty confident that you'll be able to access the market at the right time every year that you need to do it. So that's a factor. You're paying cost of issuance on each of those tax-exempt refundings. So annually, you'd be doing this bond issue in order to kind of fix that capital appreciation, capital appreciation bond payment every year for three or four years. You know, so there are some challenges with that plan. It's possible to employ that, but...
If you, if you couldn't do that, if you couldn't refund using non-taxable bonds, you could always refund using taxable bonds at that point, you're just a slave to whatever the market is doing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Last question. Is it possible, in your mind, to be able to do any of this in a way that we could refund part of it and then refund again later to try and get out from under the bubble, but then refund if the, well, I guess the rates are pretty good. It'd be hard to get better than we are now. Yeah, okay. Answer my own question. Okay, I'm sorry to take everybody's time. Does anybody else have any questions? Or comments?
I have a question for Reese and/or Mike, I guess. Your concern about going from $25 million and maybe dropping it down to the $10 million or whatever, the $15 million. What, what, why? Explain to me a little bit, if you could, briefly, Reese or Mike, either one, so that I better understand that part.
I think, I mean, I'll touch on some of the major things. You know, the property taxes, the 90-day property tax extension that the county's giving. We don't know what that impact is. I actually fear the September payment. I'm the only one, but I still have a little bit of fear there just because people that aren't paying right now, I don't know if that money's going to be there, so I fear that. And I remember '08 and '09. You know, the state's funded the last couple of years, and they've increased our funding. If you go back to the start of the Great Recession, they didn't fund, there were, half the money you owed by the state didn't show up. You know, if your district owed $15, $20 million.
Yeah, we were, we were like $6 million in arrears back then.
Yeah, so I mean, if you get into that scenario again, and we're tight, then you get to a point where, you know, you worry about cash on hand.
Yeah, and that, so that leads to my second question. How much do we have in reserve at this point? If you're saying that we've got, you want to spend 25 or 50, how much is there so that we kind of have a perspective on this?
Yeah, we have about 35% in the ed fund right now. And I mean, that was the budget, and that's, we're holding pretty tight to the budget. So when we created the budget, when we approved the budget, we had 40% in the ed fund. And if we use...
How much, Reese, like how much in dollars?
Yeah, give me the dollars.
We had 25.2 million.
Okay, okay. So that would drain much of the reserves if we were to do something like, if we were to go to 25 million? And we really would be, okay, that helps me. I just needed to hear those numbers, I guess, to get a better handle. And I, yeah, I'm very familiar with the '08, '09 situation. I knew that that could be a risk, but I didn't know what we had on handle, so that's good for me. So, thank you.
And again, if the board wants, we can come back with a different number. We could say, okay, because you can see the big difference it makes. The more you abate, that, you know, the more you save. So if you say, hey, come back with 20, we could do that. We went from a, you know, very, we went very conservative from where we were, but we can come back if the board would like this, see those numbers, too.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'm not ready to make a decision or call right now on this, but I'm concerned about stretching this out into the, you know, 2040-something. It just, it really worries me to think that we're going to be, you know, going that far out. I, I know that it's a bad situation, and I recognize that may be the way we end up going, but I, boy, it concerns me to see 2046 up there as a possible end date for it.
And again, that, the 46 one was, when the board had asked, some board members wanted to see no tax raise at all. And that's made that happen, that's why the 46 comes in. That's keeping that number flat. As opposed to, you know, the other ones have $100 raise, $180, whatever it is.
Got it, yeah, I see. Thank you.
Yeah, hold on. Go ahead, Bruce.
It's hard to hear Bruce.
I know, I'm going to try to get, he's saying he asked for the one looking for no tax rate. I, I can't get you loud enough. Oh, yeah, now, yeah, go ahead now, Bruce.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and I was concerned back then that the taxpayers, just the 200, were not going to be happy with the tax increase. I know they may have approved that back then, but not then when the realization hits that we have these, we were, let's say, very positive that things were going to get better, and we're at where we are now, where things are way worse than they were even then. And now, so that's when I asked at the last meeting. Then you look down, and I knew what would happen. The longer we take these out, you look at how much more this is going to cost us to change. We're talking $30, $40 million more we're going to be paying. I think the only, as I look at the scenarios, you just said, John, that you didn't want to see it go 2040. I would like to see it not go past 2032. We're between a rock and hard place here. The only one, if we, you know, 2037, that's, because we have to take one of the last three, according if we only abate $15 million, and that still raises taxes $170, $79 every year, which is a big hit. And I am really pretty certain that we're going to see a huge hit in property values and loss of revenue. We have to be very realistic about this. We can't be, have our heads in the clouds and say, this is all going to go away and get better. It's not. We're going to be in trouble for the next number of years. So we've got some real problems to think about here. That's all I've got to say.
Well, I just, I want to agree with Bruce here. I think that these are still very optimistic projections. I think that the best-case scenario that we're looking at here out of all of these options that were being given keeps our debt service payment essentially level. And I know we've been able to build up a bit of a surplus to handle the bubble going forward. I am not confident that five years from now, we're going to be talking about, you know, having been able to maintain that debt service payment at the level that we've been paying it. I don't think we're still going to have a surplus, you know, with an abatement even at $15 million. I'm a little more, Mike, you talked about being seen as a pessimist a few minutes ago. I think I'm with you there, and, you know, maybe more so. So you still feel very optimistic to me. I hate the idea of going out past, as Bruce said, past 2034, when it's already set. But, boy, I don't know what we're going to do right now. And I don't know, I still feel this, even dialing it back to $15 million, this still feels optimistic to me.
I'm, I'm kind of with Bruce and John as well. I don't, I can't see a situation where we can justify extending the debt beyond where it exists now. I mean, I think we're going to have to seriously look at other ways to come up with the revenue, whether that's serious cuts, something to come up with, a way to not raise taxes and not look for more money from the taxpayers than we're already getting. You know, with this pandemic and people not working, and it's a tough situation. And I, I can't, I can't see a way where we can ask for more money.
Any other comments?
Is there anything else you want to see? Is there a different scenario you want PMA to come back with? A different amount you want us to abate? Another target for tax level, anything?
I don't, I'm going to have to go with Jake on this. I think we need to look at some scenarios of how we can actually, if we don't do any of this, how we can actually, you know, what we have to do. We may have to seriously consider some changes in our, you know, as he said, cuts. We have, we have to consider. I did never wanted to consider that. I would never want to, but we can't do this to people that can lease the floor to do it right now. And we can't take this out and burden ourselves with $30 million more in payments. So I think that we need to sit down and have some scenarios or discuss what else we can do.
Yeah, I don't think I have any other requests from PMA, but we're going to have to look at things. And this is, you know, Mike, I had another question just about, there's a lot of budget items that aren't happening right now in terms of everything. And, you know, I want to see where our spending is while this, while the shutdowns are going on. And I think we're going to have to take a look at evaluating what programs are coming back out of this. I think that's part of it, looking at it from the budget side.
Yeah, just, I mean, we'll do whatever the board wants. We'll show you whatever you want. Again, when you talk about programs, you're talking about personnel, because that's our biggest cost, right? So when you talk about cuts, the only way to cut truly is headcount, because that's where the majority of our money's at. But if you want to see something, we can show it to you, whatever you want.
I don't, I don't think, yeah, I mean, nobody likes to hear that, or nobody wants that, or nobody, you know, that's a tough call for sure. But it's something, we do need to see everything on the table.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, this is, it's not really sustainable right now. And once we start seeing that and discussing it, we may get more feedback from, you know, taxpayers as to what they would like to see us do.
I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong in this, but here's the problem is, let's assume we, just for hypothetical sake, please, for hypothetical sake, for anyone who's listening, let's assume that we would say, okay, we're going to cut $30 million in salaries. The problem, the problem we have with that is that we can't then tack $30 million and not pay salaries with it. We're going to have to cut the tax, too. And that, I mean, the problem is, it's not, it's not as simple as simply taking it from one place and putting it to the next, because we can't just shift funds around and things do like that. So cutting salaries and doing things like that is not reali, I don't think, I don't think is realistic. I think the problem we're going to have to figure out is, I mean, I don't want to see us raise taxes either, but I don't, and I certainly don't want to see us extending into 2044, and I don't want to see us in 2043. You know, that, those are, that's a long time way to be extending something that was supposed to be paid for 20 years ago when these bonds were taken out. I think it's going to have to be some kind of a conglomeration of things. And I don't know that cutting programs or cutting salaries is, if that's what people are thinking, is necess, can easily be replaced when you take money and move it to the other fund, because you can't do that.
No, no, Carl, you can, because we wouldn't be keeping our levy the same for the ed fund and moving the money. We'd be cutting the ed fund, cutting our levy there, and raising the debt service levy, which we're allowed to do and is not capped. That's the replacement, correct, Risa? Am I incorrect in saying that?
It could work that way. There's...
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that's the answer either.
Yeah, I'm not either at this point. I would...
Given the amount of flush that would come out with those cuts, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a good situation, and I am the first one to tell you that, but I'm not sure that that's going to fix our problem either.
No, I'm not either, Carl, but right now, we're not talking about that at all. All we're talking about is debt restructuring is a total solution to the problem. And I think when we look at these scenarios, it isn't. And I think that even the numbers that are behind the most pessimistic scenario we have here are soft. And that's why I think we need to start talking about other approaches. I don't know what's going to work, and I know what I'm not willing to do as a school board member, and I know how hard I've been working to try to avoid laying off the members of my firm. And, but I just, I agree with Bruce. We're, the economy's not coming back from this in some kind of a two-month rebound here. So I think we need to start looking at, looking at best case and worst case scenarios here. And this, you know, for a time, the worst scenarios here that PMA was presenting to us looked like worst-case scenarios to me, and I don't think they are anymore.
And the other thing, too, to think about is there's other taxing bodies that are also looking at changes with their tax rate and what, you know, what the city's going to do and what they've already done. Not that we have any control over that, but it's something to keep in mind and keep in consideration with our decision-making if other taxing bodies raise taxes, too. I mean, I just, I don't see a way we can get, get by without taking a serious look at our, the whole picture.
All right, so what are we looking at? What do we need to see in order to make, to start making this decision?
I think, I think we've seen what we, pretty much what PMA has for us. I mean, we have to probably make a decision based on those scenarios. But I, I think, you know, Dr. Mon and Risa are going to have to kind of put together some, some other options for us as ways we can save, things we can look at to potentially... at to potentially deal with the, this, this debt issue in other ways besides the restructuring.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if we get guidance on which way you're, you're looking in there, like whatever most, is most important to you. If it's not, not raising taxes, if it's timeframe, whatever it is, then we can come up with alternate scenarios. We just have to have a little bit of guidance as far as what is most important to the board right now, because we've heard a couple of things, right? Like, and like.
Well, I, not to try to kick the can down the road either, but some of these PMA alternatives are.
I'll give them a minute. They'll come back.
Hey, so Jen, what's our timeline of when we have to make a choice, just so the board's aware?
Sure. So your absolute deadline to do something to, if you ultimately wish to decrease levy year 2020, would be March 1st of '21. If that involves a bond issue, uh, because you do have the ability to restructure bonds on a tax-exempt basis as early as this fall, um, that bond issue, we probably need a couple months lead time on that March 1st deadline, um, if a bond issue were to be involved with lowering that levy. Um, you know, is, is the, the earliest we could possibly do a tax-exempt restructuring of those eligible bonds this year is this fall, so we, we have several months before we could even think about, um, executing that refunding. So there's at least that much time.
It's on the same page. It's like a eight or nine million dollar bump next year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, a, a little more. So it go, the, what was levied versus the debt payment is a little different. Yeah, so the levy will go up about $11 million because 3 million of debt payments were abated.
Okay. So I mean, John, if you, if you're looking at how far we can kick the can down the road, you have time, because we can wait till then. We could, we have money to make that first payment. I mean, it limits your options going forward, but if you're, I mean, if you're asking for what, what, you know, how long you have, you have time, you have as much time as you want, because we have different options at different points we can do. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I cut out mid-sentence there. My internet went down.
Yeah, sorry.
I don't know how long I, I don't know how long I trailed on there. Um, but yeah, I mean, part of it is, we need to, we're not, uh, prognosticators either. We need to see what is going to end up happening with the state, how we're going to land with the next round of, uh, property taxes too, to some extent. And I don't think that there, I'm not pretending that there, uh, isn't going to have to be restructuring the debt, you know, along with anything else on the budget side.
Yeah, but, I mean, if your question is, do we have time? We do have some time, because, I mean, that, you know, Jen told you those dates, and you have money. If you want to make that first payment, it limits your options, but you do have the money to do that.
Jen, when we talked in March, we talked about doing a refunding for savings, um, of the 12 and 15 series. Was that about a $2 million in savings? I can't remember. I don't have it here with me.
Um, it was. Now, what that was doing was putting back the payments within the footprint of those bonds. So if you're at all considering a restructuring, you know, doing a portion of that, um, you know, if, if you're going to extend the debt, especially in any of the scenarios you may choose, um, doing so on a tax-exempt basis as much as possible is going to be more cost-effective in the long run than having to push out debt on a taxable basis.
So we really have an option to look at this fall for savings, and then we have another restructuring to look at for the large increase in 2022. Right?
Right. And the, the, it, it, yes, the tax-exempt refunding later this year or early in '21 could be for savings if it's kind of within the footprint of where those callable payments currently exist. Um, however, you know, they don't exist in really the bulk of those, um, years in which the debt payments are, are considerably higher. So in order to kind of adjust those, we would want to push out those payments a little farther, in which case there could be some savings, uh, overall, but, uh, not as much as if you were to put the new payments back in within the footprint, if that makes sense.
Can I ask, just out of curiosity, just looking at scenario number two, $25 million abatements, which we already have the money for that, right?
The 25 million is, is in our reserves currently.
We are capable of doing that. If you were to take, if you were to take that, so we're already capable of paying that. If we were to take that $25 million and then spread it over five years instead of over three years, and level off the, um, level off the bump, so it's a little bit lower, um, is that, is that something that might be feasible? And if so, what does that do to our taxes? I mean, that's a scenario we don't have. But the idea being that we're keeping it basically for most, for the longest period of time at the level we're at, we're applying the, um, debt, the, the $25 million evenly, spreading it out over the period of time to keep the level down, and perhaps, um, you know, having a slight, having to figure out maybe less of a, less of an increase. And I'm wondering if that might be a, something we can look into maybe a little bit. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, we can certainly show that.
On the scenario number two, you've got it spread over three years, and then we have this giant bump. Is there a possibility of spreading that $25 million over five years and then seeing what happens?
Sure. Right. So you'd definitely be reducing the increase next year from $784 to something lower, uh, but it would still kind of be at a higher level, albeit not as high as it currently is. Yes, we can do that.
But you'd be maintaining it for five years at a lower, lower than $785, but only for five years, and then you'd be going back to where we are. Or doing it in a step-up approach, whereas you, you know, you, you see less incre, you know, more, maybe, I don't know, maybe, maybe an increase of property tax in increments rather than in this, rather than in this giant leap.
Carl, I agree with you. I'd like to see that as well.
And keep, which would keep us at the same rate, same time, same timeframe, at the same level of what we're paying now, except actually a decrease at the end, and would spread it out over the five, apply the abatement over five years as opposed to over three, and maybe have some increase. And then we'd have, I mean, it maybe have some increase, or we would have an increase, but, um, we'd have to figure out kind of what we're doing and go from there.
Now, at this point, and I agree, I'd like to see that. Um, but at this point, the reason we came back and looked at a $15 million abatement versus the 25 is because that's going to leave us more susceptible to having to take on potentially short-term debt, right?
Well, it just diminishes our reserves for operating costs.
And the point of those reserves is that if the state is late with some payment, or we don't get our property taxes on time, then we're taking on short-term debt to cover our costs instead of having the reserve. Short-term debt generally more expensive than, no?
It's, the, the other factor there is, in the out years, if we're making, if we're, once we spend the balance right down, that, that's when you start talking about, there is no other choice, right? You, you make cuts, you do what you have to do to get there. So I think it kind of goes back to what you said. I mean, the 25 million, it means we're working on a net. And if the state, you know, cut funding by 10%, we're cutting 10% somewhere to, to make due, you know, without any question. So that's what the 25 million does. It takes that net away, takes the safety net away, but it also gets to what you talked about earlier. That's when bowing's on bowing, and you've got to start cutting to survive.
Yeah.
Well, and we were kind of saving for a rainy day, and we're at the rainy day.
Precisely. And I think that the point of the $25 million was for something like this, was it not? I mean, I, I, I'm wondering, if this isn't a bad situation, then when is? So I, I am, I'm interested, I'm like, I'm open to what, whatever, I'm interested in what John, you're saying and so on. It's very good to hear that. But I'm also wanting to know is how, how we can continue to leave the taxes where, I don't like those, those two-year spikes that, that we were just referencing a minute ago with, with Carl, what he mentioned. I, I would like to see it where it's, you know, it would go up, but I'd like to see what that, those numbers are, so that I have something to refer to.
Well, I mean, I think we've all expressed three competing problems with this. I don't think anybody wants us to see us extend the debt beyond, much beyond, if at all, beyond where we are now. I don't think anybody, or any of us wants to see a, you know, if we can avoid a tax increase at any cost, we would do that. If we have to, we want to minimize that. But the other concern is, I don't want to see us in a situation where, you know, we think it's the worst-case scenario now, and it gets worse, and we are really in trouble. So I mean, I think we've got to balance those three things. We, we can't predict any of, you know, we can't predict what's going to happen in the future, but we also can't, you know, we, we've got to take some steps here in the, in the near, near future, if not present, to do something about this, because we can't leave it this way. If we do nothing, the answer is there. It's a $785 tax increase, and I don't think anybody's going to want to deal with that. Anyone can get through. So, um, we, we've got to figure something out. And that's what we got to figure out is what our options are. And we've seen some debt options, there may be others, and we have to figure out what those other ones are. So what do we do moving forward? I, I guess, Jen, are you finished with your presentation?
Um, yes, you know, the next steps really, you know, have to do with the choosing targets, choosing scenario, a scenario or scenarios, you know, that you want to investigate further.
Maybe you look at a $20 million abatement, so in between scenario three and four. And that'll probably take us about four years.
Yeah, I guess between three and five.
Yeah, right.
Well, I don't want to do what the board is interested in, though. I mean, whatever, because we could give you 30 scenarios, I don't think that makes it any better for you, right? I think at some point, I mean, we said, if you're not what you want to see.
Part of the problem we have is that we're not entirely clear, or I don't think anybody is clear on what, you're asking us what we want to do, and, and I, and part of it is, we don't know what our options are in terms of things other than debt reduction. I mean, is there any, you know, as John and Bruce have discussed, is there a possibility, and Jacob have discussed, there are possibilities, some, so, some, some, uh, you know, trimming, trimming to make, to, to make up part of this? Is there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Those are the things I think that we are looking to you and to Risa to inform us on, so we can take those as part of the, of the calculus of what exactly we're going to be doing in addition to the possibility of this debt restructuring. And that's where we're, we're, we're missing information.
Yeah, well, we can absolutely bring it to the next meeting, you know, how, how to raise X amount of dollars, and what, what it means to, to get, you know, what is, what is $3 million, what does $5 million in headcount look like? That's what they're asking for. We can absolutely do that.
I think that.
I guess, I guess, Jacob, would you agree or not, say something? I think they might cut you off.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that would be good, to see dollar numbers, you know, because if we go with one of these different scenarios, and we, we go 25, we go 15, find somewhere in the middle where we can try to trim a little to, to offset that small increase. Like, if we're talking about, we're looking at these, the first three scenarios where the, the tax increase is $105, is there a way that we can make cuts or find money in elsewhere to balance that? So it's not, you know, we're not chopping, you know, whole buildings or something. We're, we're just trying to find some way to balance that out, so at the end of the day, it's a net no change, um, tax, tax bill, essentially.
You know, and at the end of the day, I think we need to be able to say, this is what the cut would look like, this is what the, what we're paying, uh, extra to avoid that cut, to the extent that, you know, there's going to be some things there that are unpalatable. You might find one or two things that are palatable, but my, my real fear is that we're going to get into the fall, and this is going to start looking a lot worse.
Absolutely. We can definitely, we absolutely come with options of what it looks like in June, so we have more information.
Um, I, I, I like what Carl's saying, you know, what if we, we don't have to make this decision? I'd like to see how things are going to be in three months or four months.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can always take the, um, and pay the extra 8 million out of our reserve funds, and then we still have 17 million left, and that still gives us time. And, I mean, if, if best thing, things would, things look great, and then maybe we could approach for my, for a small tax increase. But on the other hand, things could look a lot worse, if we may be looking at some really bad decisions at that time. I think times are now, I think.
Yeah, and you have, you have time.
I think we should utilize.
Yeah.
I agree.
I would agree too.
All right. So Mike, you're, you're going to do some analyses before our next meeting, and we'll resume this, this discussion as part of our discussion in June, is that right?
Whatever the board wants, I can do, absolutely. We can come back with scenarios of what it, what it means to, to cut 3 million, 5 million, something like, like that.
I, I think that this is good that we've discussed this now, and that the population, I'm sure that this will, you know, make the papers, this kind of talk always makes the papers. And, and, um, and so maybe now we can have, you know, our taxpayers can give us some feedback as to what they think and how they feel, because, you know, there's a lot of them going through a lot of hard times, and, and I'd like to hear from them to give me some direction on what, I know how I feel about it right now, you know, what, you know, my friends and I are going through, but I'd like to see what other people think also.
Absolutely.
I think we have consensus on that idea, where we'd like to, you know, let's, let's give more information and also wait just a little bit in terms of time, see what happens with the economy, and if it gets worse, then obviously that clarifies our decision-making a little bit more.
All right. Well, we should be continuing this discussion while that's, while we wait to see what happens too, so.
Yep.
Mike, Mike, if you can help us a little bit with some things maybe next time, and then.
We will.
Discussion, and save this to your computer so you can look up the presentation if you need it next time, because we might need it again.
Yeah, you have it in board book, too.
Yeah. All right. Jen, thank you for coming in, for, for checking in, and for, um, for your explanations and patience on all this.
Of course. Thank you very much. It's a difficult topic.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Have a great evening, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next item then, after that spirited discussion, is the approval of a contract for 2020 site improvements, if related to general improvements. Mike?
Want me to talk, Mike?
We can go ahead, Risa.
Okay, so we went out for bid for some site improvements, which was primarily concrete replacement and grading, like sidewalk repairs and so on. And we received no bidders. So, uh, we contacted legal counsel, and they said, as long as the bid was genuine, free, open to all bidders, we could just solicit quotes and contact contractors. So Steve Miller did that, and Landmark Contractors provided a bid for $241,050. And then I misinterpreted, um, Wold's recommendation, so the write-up here is a little bit wrong. It should say, and award alternates two through five for a cost of $89,640, and reject alternates one and six. I misunderstood the liquidated damages. I thought they were saying that no change, so we bid as is, but really, they wanted, um, we need to reject that and leave liquidated damages in the contract. I hope that makes sense. If not, I can try to explain it further. Um, and this would be done this spring, actually, right away, and we would use life safety funds for this work.
I think I understand that alternate number six is being taken out.
And.
After three academies' netbook.
Right.
I'm not sure I understand.
We have someone out, we have the city available to do that work, so we don't need to pay for it.
I'm not sure I understand what's happening with the liquidated damages clause, and I'm not sure who's doing the rejecting and who's, who's accepting and who proposed it. So let's start with this. Who wasn't the, who was the presenter of the contract?
Okay, so we put the liquidated damages in our bid specifications.
Okay. They rejected it, or they rejected it, or they said they wanted liquidated damages removed?
They said they want that, okay, so we put $1,000 a day for every day they're late after July 31st. They then said, no, it should be zero.
Okay.
A thousand.
A thousand.
Thousand. So we should reject that and leave it in the contract as is.
Okay, so where, as it stands right now, if they are late, they are paying $1,000 a day?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's where it wasn't clear. All right. Does anybody have any questions about any of this? All right, if not, or any comments, if not, their suggested motion on page 28 of your materials or in Board Book.
And it needs to be revised a little to say alternates two through five.
Yes. Move to order contract for site improvements, but Landmark Contractors Incorporated for a base price of $241,050 and approving alternates two through five for $89,640 for a total contract price of $330,690.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Parisi, seconded by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Holmuth? Mr. Holmuth?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Okay, next item then is our third quarter review of the 2019-2020 budget.
Okay, and we're going to start with the education fund. And off to the far right, the 2019-20 budget, and this is through March 31st. And if we begin with local revenues, we're looking at property taxes and we've received 48.2%. And so that was the 2018 levy taxes received through December. The 2019 levy, the tax bills are going out shortly, I've heard. And we will, I've gotten a schedule from the state, not the state, from the county, and then we will get one distribution in May and two distributions in June. The question will be how many people will delay. I think, Michelle, you need to mute, otherwise it has a lot of feedback there. So the question will be how many people choose delaying paying their taxes for 90 days that they now have the option to do. So we'll learn more by the end of June on how that all comes out. Tuition, we received 64.7% interest, about 80%, just under 80. Activity admissions, 70%, registration fees, only 8.7%. So I looked, again, this is through March, so I looked, how much did we collect in April? We've actually gotten another $84,000 in April. So parents are paying. It was also one item I thought, you know, we might see a decrease in before the end of the year. But they do seem to be paying that quite a bit. And then we received 56.7% of our other, which is driver's ed, kids' club, transition fees, and E-rate. We look at our state revenues, general state aid, those amounts are coming in twice a month on time currently. So there's no problem there. And then our categoricals, we're already at, you know, over 100% and that's for private facility and orphanage claims, and those claims are just higher than they have been in the past, so. See if that one will come in. Then under federal, we have our E-rate, or I'm sorry, we have our Medicare outreach and fee-for-service and that's also coming in regularly. So right now, total revenues are just under 60%. And then total expenditures are at 71.8%, about 3.2% under our 75% target. So that's good. I mean, we are, you know, as we talked about a little bit ago, we are still paying all our salaries, all our benefits, that's not changing. Our supplies, our purchase services, you know, that's, you know, going to be a little bit less. But that's only about 15% of our total budget, so it's not a ton of money. Any questions on the ed fund? Okay, then the next is O and M. Again, property tax is the same, exact same scenario. We've received 48.2%. We'll see how things flush out through June. CPPRT, we, I won't book that till May when those monies come in. Interest, we've received 72.5%. Activity admission fees, 79.5%. Building rentals are about 53%, and then other, which is mostly gas sales to the city, we're over, we're 104%. Under our general state aid and categoricals, I'll book that at the end of the year, usually in June I do that. And overall, right now, we have received 42% of our total revenues and we've spent 71.5%, so again, we're about 3.5% under budget. Utilities down there, a little further down, we've only paid out 62.1%. As you all know, we basically closed the buildings down from mid-March through April. I looked at our, I was in the office today and I looked at our electric bill and the February bill, the March bill that just came in today was only down about $9,000. I thought it'd be down a lot more, but it's so half, half a month, it went down about $9,000. So it should maybe be down about $20,000, $25,000. But I think that'll really help us utilities by the end of the year. So any questions there? Then the education fund, same scenario, property taxes. Interest as well, over 118% already. And again, all of our interest rates have gone down since the virus, the banks have really reduced our rates, so that'll start showing in the next few months. Fees are at 89.8%, and then other, which is our fee busing, is well over 164%, so that's good. State categoricals, we received 54.2% and then on Monday, we received another quarter payment. So that just came in and it'll show up in May. I'm hopeful that we'll get one more quarterly payment before June 30th, but to be seen. So overall, our revenues are 53.5% and our expenditures are over our target, they're at 79.8%. I know we talked about this last, last quarter, there's been a lot of absences and they've a lot of buses out for repairs, so causing that. But our fuel costs will be way down, so that might offset it by the end of the year. So any questions there? Then the final is the insurance fund and at the end of March, we had just over $1 million in the account and we've spent 73.2%, so again, in a, under budget where we, where we want to be at this time. So that is the third quarter review. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Risa?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Risa. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Risa.
Yep.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is the approval of the Woodstock High School Life Safety Amendment.
Yeah, this is what we've talked about a little bit. The, the need, and Steve can jump in if you, if you need him to. The fire system, fire alarm system at Woodstock High School is probably almost 100 years old. And when he went to fix it, we had to like buy parts off of Mumbai, and I don't know where. I mean, out of his garage, literally, because it's not made anymore. So we need a new system. It's an urgent need. We were having 24-hour guards in the building to make sure there weren't fires. The system operates now, it won't operate for long. If that guy stops selling us stuff out of his garage, wherever he is, we're in real trouble, so it's an urgent need. Steve, I don't know, Steve, if you want to pipe in with anything?
Uh, yeah, you, you pretty much summed it up. We, yeah, we hit eBay and searched out somebody to supply parts for us. And then we found someone that would actually give us workers that, that works on these systems. Some parts installed in the building right now, just keeping it together that we don't even own. So, yeah, it's definitely a need. The, the system, the end of the system is, you know, where the problem started, but the, the actual smoke detectors throughout the buildings and all the devices that, to it are obsolete also. You know, so when you upgrade to a new system, you have to, you have to change those devices also.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Steve or for Dr. Moe or anybody with respect to the approval of the Life Safety Amendment?
I, I do. I, I, no, I, I've got no problem with less than anybody about any kind of technology, as we can see, because I'm on the phone tonight. But I see that the system that we had was analog. So then when I saw that spec was for a new analog fire alarm, I was, I don't know if they're, you know, what's the, what, you know, you know, because you say everything else is digital, so to me, I just, could somebody just explain that? I know it's digital analog, so I'm okay there.
The, I think most all of your fire alarms are an analog system. That's the way that they work in the building. The communication outside of the building is digital, but they use an analog system to communicate from device to device through the, the head end of the system that's actually mounted in the building because it's all wired direct together. Another part of this system that's being put in, it is a newer system so that it does, it does have the capabilities, if down the road we're ever required to have any sort of announcements tied into our fire alarm system, that'll, this will have the capabilities of having that upgrade down the road also. So it would tie together with some of the security things that we're doing, you know, as things change and with lockdowns and drills. So, so it is an upgrade that way, but that part is digital for the sound system of it.
All right, so our application, analog, and it, and so I, I, I get it. I just wanted somebody to explain to me what we were getting. I, I know we need it. That's all. Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions or comments or concerns?
I just have a question and not, not a concern at all, but I just want to ask because it was done outside of the bidding system, how did we choose World Security and Control? And do we have an existing relationship with them?
Yeah, World Security, they do all our annual inspections and they maintain quite a few of our buildings already. It's just, the, the high school has a system that's, actually, World Security does the maintenance on that system. And we've used them for other buildings. I've used them in the past. They're a really good, reliable company. That was a big part of it. They were familiar with the building. They've been in it a lot and they, they, they have great service. You know, they're very reliable.
Thank you.
You know, just from my input, whenever we bring someone new into the building, they always bitter on something, thinking it's going to be fine. And then their former, they knew it telling me, I can't make this work, it's a 100-year-old building. So, I mean, working in the building usually is a necessity just because it's such an old building with so many nuances that we usually have trouble if someone hasn't worked here before.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, there's a suggested motion on page 38 of your materials or in Board Book.
Move to approve the use of Life Safety Funds in order to make the fire alarm repairs at Woodstock High School.
Got a motion by Mr. Hedley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Holmuth?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi? Mr. Parisi? Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, then the next item on our agenda is the approval of World Security and Control Incorporated contract.
Yeah, that's just the contract for, to do it.
Mike sent out, I had a question regarding the amount, the little discrepancy and he explained it in an email, so knowing that there's a little bit of a cushion in our original Life Safety Amendment, it's a little bit less than what is in the last motion. Suggested motions on page 40, or any questions or comments about that? Suggested motions on page 42 of your materials or in Board Book.
Move to approve an emergency contract with World Security and Control Incorporated for $63,500 to make fire alarm system repairs at Woodstock High School.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Hedley? Do we have a second?
Second.
Was that Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hedley, seconded by Mr. Maselli. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Holmuth?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Excuse me, folks, give me half a second. Okay, all right, that's all of our new business. Next item on our agenda is our committee reports. Have any committees met since our last meeting? Or have any committees got anything to report at this time? Okay, if not, last item on our agenda today is our motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Jay.
That was Mr. Ferris, Dr. Ferris?
Dr. Ferris.
Okay, got a motion to adjourn?
I'll get back in half a second.
Seconded by Mr. Parisi.
Sorry for having technical troubles tonight.
All right, motion by Mr. Dr. Ferris, seconded by Mr. Parisi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Holmuth?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Thank you all for your patience and lift again. Thanks for all for being here. Hopefully in June, we can actually meet each other and talk in person. Otherwise, meetings adjourned. Here's the agenda.
Good night, guys.